I'd like to call to order this evening, Monday, May 18th, 2015. This meeting is called to order, but I want you to note to council that there will be a special meeting following the regular meeting. So don't anybody get up and go home, okay?
Okay.
All right. So would you please join me in the pledge allegiance and the stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, source of all truth, we thank you for your presence. We lift up our council and staff before you and continue to grant each one wisdom and integrity in serving our citizens of Goodyear. Lord God, we ask for your guiding hand of comfort placed over our community. We pray for our educators, they enter a new season of challenges. And Father, we ask for your blanket of protection placed over the men and women in our armed services as well as our police and fire. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have three communication. Well, first of all, we're all here. Nice to see everybody. We have three communications items. The first item is to recognize May as the Building Safety Month, and Randy Westacop, Building Inspector Supervisor, will present, and I will then read her proclamation. Randy?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As far as a presentation, I really hadn't prepared a presentation, but I did want to...
Well, we're putting you on the spot, so...
Well, I appreciate that. I work better under pressure.
It's good for you.
So I did want to ask you to read the proclamation this month because it's just a way of bringing awareness to what it is we're out there doing on a day-to-day basis in our community. We're keeping the community safe, and when we're doing our jobs right, the structures that you enter, you work in, you live in, and you go to recreate, you know that there are safe structures, and we're just helping to provide a viable community out there.
Well, see, you said you didn't have a presentation. That was very nice.
Well, thank you.
So I'll come down and read the proclamation.
You have to stand up there because it is a small friend. You may have to help me.
Well, my contacts don't work that well.
Oh.
You find glass in the truck.
Well, maybe four eyes, we can do it together. All right? This is Building Safety Month, May 2015, where as the city of Goodyear's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in built environment that affects our citizens, both everyday life and in times of natural disaster, giving us confidence that our structures, they're safe and they're sound. Whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of the diligent guardians, building, safety, and fire protection officials sitting out in the audience tonight, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure safe constructions of buildings, and I will add, in the sunlight, and it's really tough in Arizona. Whereas these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in built environment to create, implement, and the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, we learn, we work, we worship, and we play. Whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfire, wildland fires, floods, earthquakes. And whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public how critical our role of our communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas resilient communities start with building codes, the theme for Building Safety Month 2015, it encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technology in construction industry. Building Safety Monthly 2015 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that places where we live, we learn, work, or worship and play are safe and sustainable, and recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agency. And whereas each year in observance of the Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by the local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, federal agencies, in protecting lives and property. Now therefore it be resolved that I, George de Lord, the Lord, the Lord, the Lord, the Lord Mayor of the city of Goodyear...
Do we like that?
I know, I know you do. Do proclaim this month, May 2015, to be the Building Safety Month in the city of Goodyear, Arizona, given under my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the first day of May 2015, to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next year I promise to bring you a bottle of water.
Oh, you've got to take a nice picture here.
You want to open it?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess I should have planned this better. So the next communication item is declare May 17, '23 as emergency, that's interesting, oh, May 17 to the 23rd as the Emergency Medical Services Week. Fire Chief Paul Louiezy will present, and then I will read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor. The fire service has a rich history of protecting the health and safety of our communities through an all-hazardous approach. It includes the delivery of pre-hospital emergency medical services. Seventy-two percent of our calls are for EMS calls on a yearly basis. When you access the 911 system, you are accessing a professional and efficient agency where firefighters are cross-trained to EMTs and as paramedics. The training is consistent throughout every community in metro Phoenix area. Our firefighters have the training and resources to respond and mitigate virtually any type of emergency, whether it's a heart attack, stroke, respiratory emergency, trauma, fires, hazardous material calls, or any other equestrian help that comes in through the 911 system. We are exceptionally trained, ready to respond, and community-focused.
Thank you. And now I'll read the proclamation. I will tell you, Paul, that this is very meaningful. Yes, come on up. Oh, that's great. No, of course I don't mind. There's some of our, I've seen those people at my own home once in a while. It is meaningful. I've been on the other end of it. I've seen you guys in other ways, and I can't thank you enough. And I just know that my neighborhood is full of people like that, and the whole city is, that when you have an emergency and a personal information, a personal emergency, it is really startling to the entire family, so I really appreciate it. So I read this with heartfelt thanks to all of you. So the Emergency Medical Services Week, May 17 through the 23rd, 2015, where as emergency medical services is a vital public service, and where as the members of the Goodyear Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and where as access to quality emergency can dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses, injury, and where as the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators, and other. And where as the member of the emergency medical service team of the Central Arizona Life Safety System Council engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate, really appropriate, to recognize the value and accomplishments of the members of the Goodyear Fire Department by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore it be resolved that I, George de Lord, Mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2015, as Emergency Service Week in the city of Goodyear, given under my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the 18th day of May 2015, to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. So here you are, Paul.
Thank you.
So we should take a picture? Okay, absolutely. All right, the next item on communication is an update about the activities of the Fighter Country Partnership Organization, and I invite Rob Boer, Governmental Relations Manager, up to make the introductions. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I know I don't need to tell any of you how important of a partner Luke Air Force Base is to not only our community, but to the state and to the nation. As we worked to secure the F-35 mission there at the base, the one thing we heard consistently from the Air Force was how unprecedented the amount of community support around the base was for Luke, and from all of the communities, Goodyear and all of the surrounding West Valley communities. But the one organization outside of our communities that has been integral to that support has been Fighter Country Partnership. Since we have secured the F-35 mission at Luke, Fighter Country has continued to work, has continued to work really hard on some exciting new projects, showing their community support to the base. So it's our pleasure to have Mr. Ron Sights, the Executive Director of Fighter Country Partnership, here tonight to tell us some of the, to update us on some of those exciting projects that they're working on with the base. Mr. Sights?
Welcome, Ron. We've been waiting for this. It's very nice that you came this year and gave us this. You have the latest and greatest to present to the council, and I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate it, Mayor, members of council. You know, I kind of, I don't want to sit here and say I've taken the city of Goodyear for granted, because it's the one city that I feel that I've had the strongest relationship, because from my YMCA days, kind of that's where I learned how to establish strong relationships with our municipalities, and I've always had a really strong relationship with Goodyear. Worked with Councilman Homan, Councilman Osborne, even Vice Mayor, Joe and I have worked on a few things. Just anyway, my relationship with Goodyear has always been great, and as Mayor said earlier, it's never too late for a thank you, and I say that all the time. So the purpose for me to be here today is to say thank you, number one, on behalf of our Board of Directors, individuals like Bob Bambauer behind me, who's got the hook, because I could go on for two hours.
Bob, you can stand so people can see you.
Yeah.
That's Bob, okay.
So on behalf of our Board of Directors, our Blue Blazers, which are honorary commander alumni, even Mr. Dahlke over here, Rachel, current honorary commander, we're embedded in so many areas within the valley, sometimes it's really easy to forget to update and let people know what we're doing. So that's why we're here.
Right.
And I know how to utilize the technology. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ron Sights. I'm the President and Executive Director of Fighter Country Partnership and Fighter Country Foundation, and that's what's so important about being here today. We're designed in a certain way where we carry two umbrellas in how we operate. We have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit license, and we have a 501(c)(4) nonprofit license. So really, that 501(c)(3) provides us the opportunity to raise funds that can be tax-deductible from our donors, and they go directly to supporting that mission of the men, women, and families and mission of Luke Air Force Base. And I'm very proud to say, in the six years, seven years of the foundation, 100% of our funds have been directly towards support, none towards operational expenses, nothing like that. So the track record of our foundation is fantastic. The 501(c)(4) provides us the opportunity, as I like to say, to have an opinion. You know, when I worked at the YMCA, it was a 501(c)(3). You can't take a political stance, you can't, you can't do anything like that, you can't have an opinion, so to speak. So that 501(c)(4) license allows us to have an opinion. What I like to say about that is, it allows us to say what Luke is not allowed to say, and it allows us to do what Luke is not allowed to do. So if we want to champion the cause of an F-35, or if we want to do anything to support the mission of Luke and advocate on behalf of the base, we can do that. And sometimes we can do that in a fashion that makes it easier than our municipal partners to do. So in the way that we're structured, it provides us a lot of flexibility to do a lot of very unique things for the base. And I'm very proud to say there's a lot of military support organizations in the country, but there's nobody in the country doing what we're doing. And we couldn't do it without the support that we have from Arizona business, and most importantly, our municipalities. And you've heard me say it all the time when we get up there, I always thank our airmen for their service, but I also make a point to thank our elected officials, because I couldn't do what you guys do. It's very difficult, it's very challenging, and the decisions that you guys make sometimes don't always please everybody. I would like to do my best to try and please everybody. So for what you guys do, thank you for your service. We support the base in three specific areas: health and human services, culture and tradition, and then mission sustainability. We've kind of adjusted that word, really what that mission sustainability piece is our lobbying platform. And I'm not the lobbyist, so to speak, I'm not that face. What we do is we work with our municipal partners, our elected officials, and we are the fiduciary for platforms that support causes that advocate on behalf of the base. Perfect example of that is we're all familiar with that Luke Forward campaign. It's kind of what our organization is known for, is that mission sustainability piece. But that's really not what we do as far as the majority of our business. I would say 15% of our business operation is that mission sustainability piece. Most of what we do is on that health and human services side and that culture and tradition piece, and that's the stuff that's the most rewarding. That's the stuff that gets Mr. Bambauer hooked for the rest of his life on supporting that base, because it's something that we're not used to. When we drive down the street, we see plane and pilot and fence. We don't realize what's going on inside the walls of that installation, and it's not always as positive as you would think. So we get the privilege to fill a lot of gaps, because we've seen that military budget consistently declining over the last few decades. Add in sequestration, and there's a lot of gaps, and so we get the privilege to fill those gaps, and sometimes improve those services on the base. I always use the autism camps, and you guys would greatly love our partner on that, you know? There's 37 kids on the base who are autistic. You know, we asked that question of the med group, between the ages of six and 14. So we worked with the Cleveland Indians, and then we brought in an organization called Hattie Larlum, and we fund autism camps for our 37 children on the base. It's fantastic. And we do have so many, so many examples, as you can see on your screen, which is why I could go on for hours about the things that we do on the health and human services side. But the one that gives me the most pride, and I'm not to say not taking, helping military families is incredibly humbling, but that culture and tradition piece is something that's very unique, because when you look at that Air Force ball, and when you look at that air show, how many people here have enjoyed that air show? You know, we were a $58,000 supporter of the air show last time it came around, because there's a lot of things that the base cannot spend money on. And as those budgets consistently decline, we're right there to fill those gaps. So that's the one that gives us the greatest pride, because our military, they're very busy, they're working very hard, and those budgets are declining on those programs and services side and those awards programs, and we're the ones that kind of get to assist the base in making sure our airmen are awarded, you know, annual awards, you guys have been to the annual awards functions, those kind of things that we get to fill in, it's incredible. As you can see, when you go through kind of our results from 2014, that gives you kind of a list of how busy we get. And I emphasize one thing very importantly is, we aren't a press release organization. So a lot of this, I don't want to say we're secret, but it might be kind of surprising the things that we're doing, we never want to create the perception that Luke cannot take care of their own, because they can. They can take care of their own. We are there to always do what we can to enhance that quality of life. And again, it's not just the Air Force. I always like to educate the community that 850 sailors in the desert in the NOSK, 350 Marines in the nation's largest marine reserve unit in the country, the Army Corps of Engineers is on the base, there's 1,200 Air Force Reserve on the base. So, you know, Luke is a large community of military representatives, and we support all the families of the base. But again, looking at the numbers, you know, we're an office of three, there's 104 total events that we supported, and I can tell you that total support number is conservative. We can't even keep up with the great things that we're doing as far as in-kind and support. So that gives you kind of an idea of where our financial support is going directly. And Goodyear is one of those cities that supports us financially too, so we appreciate that. That allows us to be successful in those areas. Now, we've become so successful in those particular areas, we want to try and improve on what we're doing, but the last wing commander specifically said to my face, "Ron, don't screw it up." And what do you mean? You're familiar with the Malaysian blunt force, you know? Don't screw it up. And the reason why it's so important for us to sustain what we're doing is that demographic at Luke Air Force Base is constantly changing. So if we're doing a finance expo for 300 airmen, it's important that we repeat that finance expo, because next time around, you got a new group of airmen at the base. So we're sustaining the program and the services we have in place, which are critically important for us to do. But now we're identifying other areas on the base where we want to be more influential, and Luke frankly deserves it. $2.17 billion economic engine, whatever that number is now, we understand that number's dated, it's measured in billions, okay? So it's a big number. $300 million going into construction for that F-35 program that's being bedded down, and rightfully so. That's what Luke is. Luke is training the world's greatest fighter pilots. They need to be doing that. So the Department of Defense doesn't have funds for other areas. That proclamation you just read for EMS, Luke has a fire station, fantastic, 55 firefighters on the base that are part of automatic aid. They answered 332 phone calls outside the fence line last year. You walk through their firehouse, you know, it deserves to be much nicer than what it is. But you know what? If it's not a mission-critical item, the base can't focus on it. It is what it is. So they don't need to have, to fix that cracked tile to go put out fires or assist families in need. Well, we want to do that. So we've adopted some of these projects underneath our Fighter Country Foundation umbrella, 501(c)(3). Two projects we're very, very excited about, it's the renovation of the Luke Firehouse number one, and it's also the complete construction of an honor guard facility at Luke Air Force Base. 975 events Luke's Honor Guard supported last year. And how many of those were funerals? I don't know. I've asked them for that number, because as you know, I like to educate on numbers. I will get that number, but they are out in, so those two projects are just as much community assets as they are Luke assets. Very critically important, you'll be driving down the base on July 13th, and it's 114 degrees outside, and you'll see six airmen in their dress blues carrying a casket with a flag on it, because they do not have a place they call home. So we want to build them a home. So as you can see right here, little rendering of the fire station, complete new kitchen. And I mean, come on, what kind of rendering isn't a cool rendering without F-35s in it? There's a rendering of the Honor Guard facility. So that's the direction where we're going. We're sustaining programs and services to make sure we can take care of the families at Luke Air Force Base, while assisting in advancing or renovating current facilities at Luke and building new ones. And I'll tell you, it's, I'm not sitting here asking the city of Goodyear for financial support. That's not why I'm here. It's to say thank you for how you guys support us already, understand the direction where we're going, and we definitely want city of Goodyear to be standing our side with those pom-poms up, loving what we're doing, because those are just the start of two projects. Our goals are much, much, much higher than that, and Luke deserves to have the type of infrastructure in place to support the families just as much as it deserves to have the infrastructure to train those F-35 fighter pilots. Any questions?
Thank you. That was it. Let me move on to the council. Council comments?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I appreciate everything that you do, really do. I know we all do.
Councilman Stip?
Ron, is there something that we can do?
Well, I'll tell you what, we're taking our time. We have some great leadership, and Charlie Freyrich is going to be our committee chair. Don Brant and General Browning have agreed to be honorary co-chairs of our Facility Advancement and Relief Fund, and what I love about those individuals is they're very process-driven. So we're taking our time, but here's what's awesome, is if our organization got a million-dollar gift four months ago, we couldn't spend the money. Now we could spend it with a $5,000 event, a $10,000, it'd take our time. As of end of March, we have Department of Defense approval to spend $979,000 on the base. So if somebody wanted to write us a million-dollar grant or a million-dollar gift through our foundation, we could start breaking tile tomorrow, so it's awesome. So what can you guys do when that thing officially launches, and it'll probably be, we won't do it in the middle of summer, because that's just not smart. So probably towards fall, we will have an official launch of our Facility Advancement and Relief Fund, and we'll make sure the city of Goodyear's invited and can attend, and we're just going to need people to champion our cause.
Great, thank you. Thanks for all the work that you do in the two foundations.
Yeah, you got it.
Councilman Lortana?
Thanks for everything you do, especially for the families of our service members, because they can't do their job without you helping their families. I'm sure that gives them a lot of peace of mind, knowing that you guys are there for the families. And do let us know, because there's a lot of people in this community that love to volunteer, and they just need to know what's out there, and I'm sure we can get you lots of hands and help, and so just keep us up to date. So thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I'll tell you, it's very unique when your support, I always say, you know, when I was at the YMCA, really a large volunteer-driven organization, and it's been very challenging for me when we get these hundreds of phone calls monthly, wanting to support the base, and I've developed this little saying, you know, when you're supporting an organization that has an M16 at the front door, it's very difficult to work with volunteers. Not saying that we don't use volunteers, we do use volunteers, but a lot of times our volunteer platform is what your city managers are part of, the Blue Blazer Squad and Honorary Commander Alumni Platform. And then a lot of the times, from a logistical standpoint, the base will work on the programs and events from an operational standpoint, and we'll be that fiduciary underneath to support it. But when we do have those big volunteer opportunities, I'll make sure you guys are aware.
Councilman Osborne?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I've been so impressed over all the years, not only from your position and helping all of the airmen that have been there through the times and the holidays where you've had big events for them because they're homesick, and to everything that you've done for the F-35s, but also you've had great partners, like Bob. You've had great community support with a lot of people that have come together, and you know, I know that sometimes those kinds of things are like herding cats, but you know, you've done a great job, and I really appreciate it. I know this is a passion of yours, and it has been for quite a few years, so thank you for this presentation.
Don, I'm glad you brought that up too, because I wanted to make sure, you know, the businesses of Goodyear are also very supportive too, especially that Cancer Treatment Centers of America, Dick's Sporting Goods, Sub-Zero, a lot of Goodyear business, the Cleveland Indians that I referenced earlier, very, very supportive of us and our cause too. So, I mean, it goes from council, you know, city support staff, to your business, I mean, through and through, you guys rock. You're awesome.
Anybody else here? Councilman Campo?
Well, I just want to thank you for what you do for the deployed families. When I moved here in 2000, we did not have a program for the deployed families, and with the Protestant women of the chapel and the Catholic women of the chapel, for the first six years, I helped cook and serve dinner to these wonderful people, because I'm the wife of an Air Force 25-year veteran who has 6,000 hours in his airplane, and I understand the mission, I understand what we're trying to do. And I'm also the cookie chair for Pebble Creek, and I collect 900 dozen cookies every Christmas to take out to the spouses' club so that they can distribute it. But more than anything, we enjoy the air show, simply because my husband was project officer for several years, and I know what goes on, and what you can't afford, and what you can't do, and for your organization to step in and fill that gap is amazing, because it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to showcase something we're very proud of, and we want everyone to know what a wonderful base and facility we do have. So we do thank you and your staff of three. So, we do thank you and your staff of three. We thank you very, very much for all that you do. And we do support in what you do. We can't always come up with the money, but we can certainly talk to people and keep your mission alive for you.
You know, I always break it down into three areas. Money, information, and time. Money is great. Information is better and time is priceless. The information typically is what leads to that funding. You mentioned deployed families. Luke's got its largest deployment in the last five years coming up. Everybody says the war is over. Well, they forgot to tell a lot of people. Over 200 individuals will be deploying between July and August. And obviously, it's not fighter pilots because Luke doesn't deploy fighter pilots. But it's civil engineering. There's like 50 or 60 from the Civil Engineering Squadron going, 50 or 60 from Security Forces. So, those things that we've done for those deployed families over the last two or three years, which we've gotten very good at and improving at, we're just going to continue to get better. So, it's great. And airshow is March 19th and 20th.
Yeah, we have it on our calendar.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I just wanted to say, Ron, it's great. Fighter Country Partnership has always been dear to my heart, as you know. And I've long said that while we're delighted the F-16 or the F-35s were here, I think our community has demonstrated over many, many, many years how proud we are that Luke Air Force Base is here and how much we appreciate their mission. It is not just because they have a $2.7 billion contribution to our community, but because we believe in them and we appreciate them. And I don't think we've ever, ever strayed from that philosophy with our men at Luke Air Force Base.
Last comment would be from me because you know that I'm a wife of a 30-year-old, 30 years in the military and a fighter pilot. And we've been on with the Army, the Navy, and the Air Force. And I've worked with all the organizations on all those three services. And I reflect back on Navy relief when I worked with them in San Diego. And I can tell you, we had people on welfare enlisted. And I think that is the case still in some of the services. And I worked in family services for years and that was our support system. And we didn't have a lot of over-the-fence-line support. We didn't have a lot of support when our husbands were gone nine months, 14 months, and we were taking care of the children. And so, the, you know, when you support families, you're living stateside and half of your family is living overseas, that's costly. Even though they do have some support financially, it's not enough. So, I can really, through the pit of my stomach, feel the joy of what you are going to accomplish by this for the... For all of the military, but I think of the spouses, I have to tell you, because they're the ones that they hop a plane, they wave goodbye, and you're the one that's going to take care when the hurricane comes and when the flood comes and when the snow comes and when the kids are sick and you're in the hospital. And I mean, all of that is under the wings of the spouses. And nowadays, you've got male spouses and female spouses at home. So, this is just wonderful. And then, secondly, this is a big step for the United States government to take, for the Armed Forces to take, where they are finally breaking down the barrier of accepting financial help and other help. It's never been done before. We could never talk about, we could never ask. So, this is extraordinary. So, I think this is going to be, if this works well in our community of Arizona, this will be a model for all of the bases throughout the United States. And since we really are not being supported by the government because of sequestration, these things are necessary. So, my thanks go out to you and the organization and for the council to know we do support it. The city manager and I attend a meeting. We have been, we've been working with them on a number of in-kind trying things that we might be able to do as a city. So, whenever, you know, we've made that concrete, I'm sure the city manager will be talking to all of you and we can pursue it from there. And do you have any comments, Brian?
Given the opportunity, absolutely. It's very excited, Ron, that you had a chance to present because the message doesn't get out there to the public. And for you to take the time and also Bob Bambauer to be here tonight to really be here to show what happens with Fighter Country Partnership with the foundation and that your team does an amazing job and our pledge is to continue to work with you. So, thank you for all that you do.
So, thank you very much.
If I may approach, I classify our organization sometimes as a whole bunch of professional pretenders because we are civilians. And so, we have our own RMO, as they call it, or a round metal object. So, I'd like to present members of council and the mayor with our RMO.
Come to the audience and do that, yes.
Do you shake my hand? Right now, sir.
And you better have it with you when you go to the bar. Because if you don't have it in your pocket, you're buying the drinks.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's good. Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ron. Appreciate it.
Yep. And I have two more, two representatives that you have on your staff that I'm very excited to see in place with Rob and Rachel. I worked very closely with them when they were the other cities. So, I was ecstatic to hear that they came to a city that's geared for growth. So, thank you very much.
That was very smooth, very smooth, Ron. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Is there anybody that happens to be in the audience that hasn't filled out a card that would like to speak? All right. So, let's go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.3 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on April 27, 2015. Item 6.2, approve the final plat for Estraya Parcels 12.37, 12.39, and 12.40 subdividing 39 acres into 126 single-family residential lots and 12 tracts generally located east of Estraya Parkway between Spring Drive to the north and San Miguel Drive to the south within Estraya Phase 1 planned area development subject to stipulations. Item 6.3, adopt Resolution Number 15-1707 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona acting by and through its Department of Transportation to establish responsibility for funding, installation, and maintenance responsibilities of landscaping to be constructed with the I-10 SR-303 Traffic Interchange Phase 1 Landscape Segment.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item? All right. Then could I please have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, thanks. Let's go to the business. 7.1 is to consider approving a Series 12 liquor license for Mod Pizza. Sue Brunkard, deputy city clerk, excuse me, will present.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to announce that city staff received a request this morning from the applicant to continue consideration of Mod Superfast Pizza LLC Series 12 Liquor License. There has been a recent change in the ownership structure. And continuing the application to a later council meeting will allow city staff time to review the additional background information and complete its investigation.
So, we're just going to take this off the agenda is what you're saying? Okay. All right. Thank you for the information.
And the next item is Series 12 Liquor License for Angry Crab Shack Restaurant. All liquor license applications for new businesses are placed on the business agenda so that you have an opportunity to ask questions and conduct a roll call vote. The Angry Crab is located on the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Van Buren Street in the old JB Restaurant Building. The Angry Crab is a franchise restaurant and they plan to open at this location in July or August of this year. They currently have locations in Mesa and Phoenix, and they plan to open two more locations in Arizona by the end of this year. They serve Cajun-style seafood and their signature dishes consist of bags of southern boil-style seafood with various heat levels and seasoning choices. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, I believe, is in the audience if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Okay. Then could I please have a motion a second to approve the request from Ronald Wayne Liu, owner and agent for the Angry Crab Shack Restaurant for a new Series 12 Liquor License, number 121207A2226, located at 310 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear, Arizona? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, a second from Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Mr. Liu? You can stay right there. I just wanted to thank you very much for choosing to locate here in Goodyear. We're excited to have something a little different and I think it'll be a great opportunity for us. So, thank you for choosing Goodyear.
And so convenient to the city hall. Anybody else? All right. Councilman Osborne?
Mr. Liu, thank you for coming to Goodyear. On behalf of myself as a council member, but also as a tenant in the Goodyear Village Marketplace right behind you, we welcome you to the center. So, thank you for coming on board.
And again, I think we really were excited to hear you were coming. We saw the sign out there and we've been long waiting for it. It sounds like, I haven't been to your restaurant on the other side of the valley, but seafood is one of, I think, the delights and we don't have too much of that in Goodyear. So, we certainly welcome you with open arms. So, okay, so with that, council discussion has been done. We're going to have a... We didn't do a motion. We didn't motion, didn't I? All right. Just want to make sure I did it. Okay. Just have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's go to the next item, 7.3, to consider authorizing amendments to applicable development agreements extending expiration dates for three West Goodyear properties. Bob Beckley, deputy city manager, to present.
What you see before you is the development parcels included in the West Goodyear properties. The areas that I put bolder outlines, here is Amber Meadows. Padera is located there. And La Jolla Vista is right there, kind of in the center of the entire developments. This whole area is what we refer to as the West Goodyear Properties. This council action is requesting extension on an interim basis from the current expiration, which is in June and July, where these plats for these three developments will expire. What's been requested is an extension to allow them more time to develop their properties. When we first were faced with that discussion, we really wanted to look at what are some of the basic issues and problems that they're struggling with to try to develop these properties and begin construction. And what we found out was the current market conditions, the cost of the off-site water lines are so significant that it makes development of parcels currently very, very difficult and challenging. And also, the tight borrowing conditions, which is affecting a lot of the home sales and new home developments. Based on those issues, what we're recommending is to have an interim extension of their plats to the October 31st. That would allow us time to begin to discuss with not just the three property owners, but all of the properties within the West Goodyear. Because what's needed is, and what we're hearing from all of them, is a common theme. It's no longer possible to take down large tracts of properties. They need phasing. So, that phasing wasn't really envisioned in the cost recovery plan that was prepared. If you were to build it, you had to build all of your offsites. And that really has presented significant challenges to them. So, what the phasing plan would do would be to allow up to 400 parcels to be developed, 400 homes to be developed within each phase. And that would vary based on the conditions of each development. Some properties, you may have the three phases. Some may have two phases. It really would depend on the configuration and where they were receiving their offsites. So, what is before you tonight is a resolution which would just provide that interim extension. During that period of time, we would have discussions with all property developers' owners in the area. And the objective would be to develop common, consistent language for all current agreements and all future agreements. So, everyone is playing by the same rules. We've had expressions of interest from a number of developers that are affected by this. And in our staff discussions, the phasing plans that were just tentatively discussed would be applicable to many of those. It's going to be challenging. I think as many of you are aware, it was challenging years ago to get these, pull these agreements together. But I think everyone is seeing that this is a benefit that many, if not all, could realize. So, for those reasons, we're supportive and we're recommending your support to allow us this time to develop those agreements and come back to you before October 31st with a recommendation, including those conditions and all of the new amended development agreements. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this subject? All right. So, would the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1708 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1708 authorizing the preparation and execution of amendments to the amended and restated development agreement for Padera, the amended and restated development agreement for Amber Meadows, and the amended and restated development agreement for La Jolla Vista, extending the expiration deadlines for the existing approved final plats for Padera, Amber Meadows, and La Jolla Vista until October 31, 2015, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second, please?
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
You know, Bob, I can appreciate that they want to develop this parcel. But the one thing I would like the city to look at, you know, as we face various challenges when it comes to our services, whether it's police or fire, and we've got a parcel that's a ways out from our current service level. If what we do actually speeds up the development process, I like a cost-benefit analysis study as well as how it's going to impact our level of service if for some reason, several hundred hounds come on. Because I think there's kickers in there as far as when we have to build fire stations and provide fire service. So, again, I don't want growth for the sake of growth. I want to make sure that we can provide those services and it's not going to be a budget buster as a result. So, I just ask you to look at some of those cost-benefit whenever you finally get to the final development agreement.
Councilman Stip?
Bob, I got a couple of questions for you. First is, who initiated the request for the extension? Was that staff initiated? Was that...
No, it was, we met with the members of the developments that are included in there. They brought the issue to us because their plats were expiring.
Okay. And we have not issued any prior extensions. Is that correct?
We have. A year ago, each of the three received a year extension. And that went back to a report on building activity that was presented to council. And coupled with that was a request to extend each one of those three for a year. So, they've had one extension, one year extension.
Okay. And how long, do you know how long these have been, when I say on the books, since their final has been done?
You mean since 2005 or when they...
Yeah, they go back.
They go back.
Yeah, I know the original one goes way back.
Yeah, because I was on the council when the 16 came together and it was a pretty extraordinary agreement that they came together on.
Okay. So, we're talking quite a long time, then?
But when the, once the plats were approved, then we were looking at roughly two years ago, or, yeah, two years ago.
Okay. I think that was where I was probably driving toward. Okay. So, what happens then in October, when nothing, when we're unable to reach up, everyone just can't seem to agree? What happens then?
That would come back before you for these three developments, and we would provide a recommendation at that point. What that recommendation would be is really depending on the success or lack thereof of these negotiations and these discussions.
But essentially?
It could be one, it could be to no extent, to not extend, or to extend those three, or to extend with common language. So, I see at least three different potential alternatives.
Three different options. And is there a downside to granting the extension?
We don't believe so, because at this point, these are still in play. What the objective, what we're trying to do here is to try to maintain an ability for these developments to proceed. So, doing nothing, or just to extend it for a year, would not accomplish any relief in any of these areas. So, we see this as potentially a step to try to address some of these, to hopefully bring to consensus more flexibility in a phasing plan.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Loretano?
And I just want to be clear, when we're talking about the phasing plan, you're going to bring in the other parcels that were to this agreement as well, not just the three here. So, it's going to hopefully solve any additional extensions. Are we going to contact the other ones, or just the ones here?
All of the original, and the ones that are current owners of these properties will all be invited. Our goal would be to obtain all of them, to be involved in these meetings, to talk about how it would affect each of their properties, and then we'll be looking at some specific cases with this, because every development is a little different. But I think the terms that we've talked about in concept, I think, would be very applicable to just about every one of those properties. So, we will come back with a report of the properties that have been participating, and if we feel that we've completed, you know, a sufficient number of those property owners to ensure that this thing, this plan, this strategic plan would work.
So, the goal is to try to get as many as possible, so we have some consistency, like what the vice mayor was saying, so that we know where the development is going to be phased in at?
That's point one. Point two is, we want to have a uniform standard, because that's the only way that this will be defendable, and this will sustain.
I'm just going to add, before I pass it on, could you show them where there's already active communities? So, I think they're thinking that this is just sitting there with nobody around them, but there are some communities that are finished that are around them.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have that information with you right now, but if I look at the plat...
This area right, Las Briesas, we have development in this area right here. That's primarily the main point, Canyon Trails, as you see, that's already been built. There's interest here in Rose Garden. There's also interest in Las Briesas, La Privada here, and then the three development that I mentioned. We've all, we've heard expressions of some sense of urgency from all of these properties.
Who wanted it? Councilman Campbell?
So, if I understand correctly, today is just to give them an extension until July?
From July through the end of October.
All right. And then, you're going to come back, hopefully, with a request from all of the property owners, except the ones that have already been developed, that they can build by phasing in rather than the complete project?
We would come back with phasing language that would address consistently, a consistent language to support phasing in all of the agreements. The properties that want, these three parcels have final plats that need to be extended. So, those three will be included. There may be others that will come either then or earlier, if we have consensus, that will also be included with that same language.
All right. So, what we're trying to do is to keep them from having to have their plats expire, and then having to start the process all over again, which would take another several years, since we've been dealing with this for years.
Exactly.
Do we have any assurance by giving them this extension, and then possibly giving them a waiver on the amount of homes they're going to build, that they're actually going to do something and not come back again?
Can I interject something in this? Because I think what we have to look at this, okay, so if you say, okay, go away, we don't want to extend anymore. Okay, now, where are you?
Right.
These have been, and at once it was 16, and now it's, and it's different ownership in some of them. So, if you say you've accomplished nothing, these are people coming forth saying, you have a viable business, we want to develop, the circumstances surrounding economics is hurting them. Infrastructure, since we had that in 2005, has doubled. So, the cost of these developers and builders is far more superior than it was. So, now, what we, you know, I think this is a great approach, that the city is getting involved with this, to try to bring them together, to come out with a solution. And of course, they won't all build at one time, but if they know they have, if they can depend on another partner to help partner with the cost of this infrastructure, then it gives them some viability, because they don't build homes to give them away. And we want to be sure when they build the homes in the community, it's a community that people want to buy in, and people want to buy where they have good infrastructure. Okay? They want to be sure of everything. So, I don't see any loss in this for the city. I see more of a loss if we just say, okay, we're not going to extend anymore, these people, go away businessmen, we just want someone that's going to build tomorrow. I don't, that's not the attitude we want. We want to nurture them during this time and try to help them. My question was going to be... I'm sorry, I interrupted you like that.
My question was going to be, since the development has developed, and I have to say on the left-hand bottom screen...
Las Briesas?
Las Briesas has. And if I understand all of these developments, they were going to develop, but then the cost of bringing in infrastructure would be shared by everybody else. They would bring it into their property, and I would hope that it looks like there's a property between them, of your black box. So, that's not helping them develop now, but by extending them, giving them more time, perhaps something could be worked out with that one piece.
That's correct. And those kind of incentives are what we're going to attempt to refine.
To talk to them about.
Okay.
Financial advantages, so that they wouldn't put as large of a degree of money upfront for some of the things that might go around their perimeter.
Right.
So, there's a couple of things that we've talked about internally that might soften the blow a bit.
Mm-hmm.
So, there'd be an incentive, there'd be an advantage over what is available today.
Okay. Well, I was hoping that by extending it, it would give them time to probably work on something, to see if they did do a smaller part of their project, then they wouldn't have to put in all the infrastructure in. They don't have to put it into where they're going to build, and then finish it later on.
Conceptually, that's correct.
Okay.
That's the path that we're headed on.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, I think I said, I think I said a lot. I just really feel that this is just kind of an extension of the downturn, and we need to work through it, and we need to be a city that is supportive for our development. So, okay. All right. Oh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I don't have a problem with being supportive of development. My only concern is, is that the cost benefit, as you do it, because we've got some things coming down the pike, water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, things up to speed. I want to make sure it's not putting more of a burden on our system. That's all I'm asking, is when they do their cost, and they, whatever they come up with, that it's not shifting to us, that still the developer that's putting these pieces in, and it's not putting more pressure on our infrastructure. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I just assume, and just help me with this, that community development has looked at this before, and we're quite aware of the infrastructure that's going to take to develop this. I mean, this isn't anything new.
We have impact fees that are programmed in for the enhancement of our sewer wastewater system. But this gives us an opportunity to really take their temperature, as far as who's going to go first, and we get a better prediction of when these new homes are coming. So, we'll be able to ensure that the facilities are there to support these.
Bring back the partnership of it all.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thanks. We'll go to 7.4, is to consider adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code. Ed Kulick, chief building official, and David Smith, fire marshal, plans examiner, to present. Or are you just presenting?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Dave Smith had to step out to another meeting.
Okay.
So, I'll just be presenting tonight. Start off with the fire code. We had a work session back in March, and we discussed a lot of the particulars to it. There's no update since the work session on the fire code. So, we ask that you support the recommendation to adopt the 2012 International Fire Code.
Okay. Go ahead.
That concludes my presentation on that.
No, no. Do you want him to do both of these and just do it? Is that what you want me to do, since?
No, we need to do them separately.
Okay. All right. The presentation separate.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1698 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1698, declaring as public records International Fire Code 2012 edition and Amendment One thereto filed with the city clerk.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Essentially, what you're saying in your very brief presentation is that there were no changes based on the work session that we had in March on the fire codes, correct?
Correct, Councilman Stip.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Campbell?
And the 2012 edition is the latest edition, for now, as of today?
No, the 2015 code has been in print since January.
But we're waiting...
We're taking a step from the 2006 to the 2012.
That's a pretty big step.
That's a big step.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't really have the time to try and incorporate the 15 as well. There's a lot of changes.
Okay. So, can we then think that it won't be another six years when we do 15?
Correct. My plan is to adopt it within the next year or so.
Or so. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Will the city clerk please read ordinance 15-1320 by title only?
Adopt ordinance Number 15-1320, amending Section 5-2-1 of Article 5-2 of Chapter 5 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the adoption of the International Fire Code 2012 edition, and for the adoption of amendments to the International Fire Code 2012 edition to amend Article 5-3 of Chapter 5 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for penalties, remedies, and actions for violations of any provisions of Article 5-2 of Chapter 5 of the Goodyear City Code, to provide for the repeal of existing ordinances or portions thereof that conflict with Articles 5-2 and/or 5-3 of Chapter 5 of the Goodyear City Code as amended, providing for the preservation of existing rights and duties, providing for corrections of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date of July 1, 2015.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second from Councilman Holman. Up for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, with 7.5. Ed, you're on again, and to discuss the, to consider the adoption of the updated technical building codes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Same thing, we had the work session back in March, discussed the technical aspects of the code. One change that we did make since the work session was we left in the exemption of the school fees, so we won't be having to charge schools the fees. We met with the superintendents, had a good discussion with them about their needs and our needs for the city, and we decided that was the best action to propose to the council.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any, do you have more?
No.
All right, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Does anybody else like to speak? All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1697 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1697, declaring as public records certain uniform building-related technical codes and amendments thereto filed with the city clerk.
Thank you so much. Could I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
I just wanted to say thank you to you, and actually to Brian and staff for sitting down with superintendents to not only go over what all these changes mean, but also the fee structures. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
I'd just like to echo that. I appreciate you working with the school districts. They have enough challenges today, and I appreciate you working with them. Thank you.
I'd like to also add to that. I feel that was a humane and right direction to go in. The education system is challenged right now, from government, from all over, and we need to be supporters of them, because after all, they are educating our children. So, okay, so roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. So, will the city clerk please read ordinance 15-1319 by title only?
Adopt ordinance Number 15-1319, amending Section 9-1-1 of Article 9-1 of Chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the adoption of more current additions of uniform codes and regulations for buildings, structures, and uses thereof, for the adoption of amendments to the uniform codes and regulations for buildings and uses thereof being adopted, to add Sections 9-1-3 through 9-1-6, to provide for penalties, remedies, and actions for violations of any provisions of Article 9-1 of Chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code, to provide for the repeal of existing ordinances or portions thereof that conflict with Article 9-1 of Chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code as amended, providing for the preservation of existing rights and duties, providing for corrections of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date of July 1, 2015.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Holman, and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item is in the business to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 16 tentative budget. sixteen tentative budget. Lori Wigan-Roth, Budget and Research Manager, to present.
Thank you, waiting for the presentation to come up here. The, this is the first in a series of three meetings that we're going to be coming to you to do the final steps of adopting the budget that we've been working on for most of this year. What I thought I'd do is just, we'll kind of quickly walk through how we got to where we are, the different things that we've covered so far, and then I wanted to remind you that a lot of this material, most of this material with one exception, you've seen at least two times if not more over the last several months. The area that you haven't seen that we'll talk about in a little bit more detail are the carryovers from the fiscal year fifteen budget that you approved into next year's budget. You know, one of the things that we've talked about several times is the processes, the enhancements that we made to the staff process in the past year. We increased the amount of monitoring that we do on the existing budget as a way to identify any problems or issues that may need to be addressed in the new year budget. We increased the internal review by both the Finance Department and the Engineering Department of capital projects as well as operating budget supplemental requests, and we did an intense review of the carryovers. And then, of course, you have also been very active in this process. This calendar outlines the meetings that you've participated in over the last three, about eight months, and in about twenty, twenty-one hours of public discussion, presentations, discussion, feedback, and input on your behalf. It's been a pretty impressive process to this point, and you've talked about things like revenues forecast, the revenue forecast, expenditures, looking at one-time requests for capital projects and supplementals, looking at tax policy, and then making, providing guidance and consensus, consensus guidance about how we should move forward with recommending a budget to you, which was presented to you, draft was presented to you on May fourth. So I'll start by first, kind of, you had a, you received a handout that has the kind of the key, the key summary schedules for the budget, and just to quickly point, walk through this, the first tab has what's called the state budget forms in our, in our world, and those are the things that will be eventually be published as our budget. The manager's message, the financial policies that were used to guide developing the budget are in here as well, and then there's a series of city schedules in the fourth tab. I'll refer to those a couple times during the presentation to, and get you oriented to where that information is, and then behind the last tab is the ten-year CIP. And in terms, I raise that now because behind the fourth tab is Schedule Ten near the back, there's eleven schedules in here, and that document includes the carryovers that are being included in the budget that we're presenting to you today. And essentially, just to go over the purpose of carryovers and what they are, carryovers are items that, that were adopted in the budget that you approved for this year. They are concept, they are things that are in process projects, items that are in procurement, perhaps projects that have been delayed, and what we, what we need to do is, in order to pay those bills next year, we have to have budget capacity next year to do that. And when we, when we do something like a large construction project such as a road, we can't award that contract until we have all the money in the budget, and so that may mean that, you know, the budget gets approved. I'm reading on the keyboard.
I wonder where that came from?
The, you know, the budget may be approved, it may take, you know, six months to go through the procurement process for something like a large project, and then the project gets underway in the second half of the year. You can't complete a large construction project in a few months, and so the bills will, the work will continue to proceed, and the bills will continue to come in in the subsequent year, and so that's why we carry over those budgets. There are, another reason that we do some of our carryovers, in some cases, we kind of build up the savings in advance to do projects. A good example of that is the project related to a recreation center that we first started budgeting for in FY15 that has funds budgeted for it in the next several years. We will continue to carry those amounts forward year after year as they build up to an amount that would allow us to actually move forward with the award of that, with the award of that project. So that's kind of what I'm referring to as multi-year savings for larger projects. And then the last thing I wanted to point out about the carryovers that are in here, they, because of the budget process is, and has to begin well before the year, the new year starts, we had to pick a point in time in which to identify what those carryover amounts might be, and so these numbers in here are based on the best information that was available at the beginning of March. As we move forward and we adopt the budget, once the year has ended, we will go back and we will look at those carryover items and make sure that we maintain the projects at their original budget, because it's very likely, and I can certainly point out a few projects on here, where since we made those estimates in March, additional payments or additional bills have been received, and we've been able to make another payment on a particular project, and we may have been planning to make that payment next year. So what we'll do after the, after the year-end close, we'll go back through, if we carried over $2 million for Project A, we will go back and say, oh, wait, Project A actually spent $500,000 of that $2 million in '15, so we will reduce its budget next year by that $500,000 that it actually ended up spending in the year before. So in some cases, you'll, if you look at some of these, you may say, gee, I know that project's well underway, why are we carrying over so much money? It's just avoiding, it's again, this conservative approach to budgeting that we use. If we don't have the budget capacity next year, we can't pay the bills, and so, so rather than risk not being able to pay a bill, we, we, we take an early look at what the carryovers need to be.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor has a question for you.
Not a question, more of a comment, I guess probably more for the general public. When it comes to that, you're the controller, you control those funds, so it prevents money to a department that can actually use that appropriation for something else other was intended to, just to make sure it's clear, even though those numbers may be larger than what's needed, you will control what goes back to them, so there's not a way of moving money or appropriation within a department to spend for something that they weren't intended to spend for. Is that an accurate statement?
Vice Mayor, yes, that's an accurate statement. We will ensure that budgets are reduced if the funds are spent, so that the departments can't access it. In fact, you will be approving those budget transfers to make those changes, probably in the first quarter actions next year, so we will work quickly to adjust and revise those budgets downward if they need to be, and then we will bring forward to you the budget transfers for approval that, that actually implement that as well.
Does the appropriation reside in the budget office, so you're actually moving the money over, or who has control over these carryover funds? Isn't it the budget office?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the budgets will be established in, for next year, they'll be established in the particular project where it needs to be spent.
Okay.
But as transact, as items come through to request approval of payment, we will do an analysis, if it's related to a carryover project, we will do an analysis before we authorize that payment, to make sure that we have, that that budget has been reviewed and has been adjusted appropriately if necessary before a large payment would move forward.
Okay, my question was more for the public, to make sure that these are controlled, that you have an excess appropriation that can't be moved within a department for some other project or something else they wanted to do because, which it was not intended to. That's the point I tried, was trying to get across.
Yeah, and that, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, those, those amounts, when we determine that they should not be in the department's budget, they are put in a whole nother place of the budget where nobody makes, it's a line item in the budget where no expenditures are ever charged, and so it becomes inaccessible for use once, once we move those funds. Welcome. So I wanted to just go over, the list that's in Schedule Ten is broken into two pieces, it includes the capital project carryovers, and those total approximately $32 million. Some examples of some of the projects that are included there are the Goodyear Boulevard project, and you'll notice that a project like that may be listed several times on the, on the schedule that's in there. That's because the schedule is by funding source, so that particular project has several funding sources. This is the total of all the funding sources that are involved, and I would guess this would be one of those projects where there may have been a payment made since we established this dollar amount. And there's about twenty, a little, or excuse me, about forty unique projects on this capital project list when you adjust for the duplications due to different funding sources. Some other examples are the ERP system that's being worked on right now, there's some developer funds moving forward, catch up on my notes here. An example, you know, another example of a, of a project that's being carried over because we're building up a savings account similar to the recreation facility is breathing apparatus equipment for the fire department, we need to replace that all at once, and actually, I'm getting ahead of myself, that's on the next slide, but, and, but these are, so these are the types of projects, these are the major items that are being carried forward. A couple others that are on there, another one that's, that is on the carryover list in this area is the Bullard Avenue project, that's another project that we've probably made some payments on that will, we will evaluate quickly after the beginning of the In terms of the operating budget carryovers, there's a lot fewer of those, there's not as many long, longer-term, larger projects in the operating budget, that's usually a capital budget kind of thing, but there is about $4.2 million of operating budget carryovers, 3.5 million of that is in the general fund. Of that, the largest single item is the funding that has, it's again, it's a, these are funds that are available to support agreements that are going forward from here. There's about $1.4 million being carried over for the funds that have been set aside to pay job credits associated with agreements that are out there. The, the second part of the payment for the mid-decade census is due next year, if you'll recall, you established the budget for that in this year through budget transfers out of the asset management appropriation authority, and so this is moving those funds, the budget authority into next year so we can pay those bills next year. And then there are four pieces of equipment, fleet equipment, that have been ordered that will not be in before the end of the year. Essentially, there's three street sweepers and a Tahoe that, due to some of the insurance timeline, didn't get ordered as early in the year, or the reimbursement for the Tahoe didn't happen as early in the year as we would have liked, so that order happened a little later. So that represents essentially, most of that is three street sweepers that will have been ordered but won't be delivered until after the first of the year. Then just to kind of go over the highlights of what's in the, kind of the new items in the, in the budget, again, the big emphasis this year, in this year's budget at least financially, was, was asset management and preserving the assets that we already have. There's about $11.7 million in asset management in the, in the FY16 budget, and that's for things like fleet, technology, hardware, pavement management, all those items we've been talking about, and including the new reserve for the parks, parks facilities, parks themselves, parks equipment, that, that will be moving forward. We talked about investing in employees, there's training on building codes, giving the tools to employees that they need to do their jobs effectively, and then an effort to bring salaries or compensation to the market is another big emphasis in the, in the budget. Preparing for development, we've talked about that, there are, there's funding in there to, for temporary, temporary staffing if development continues to grow, as I think you've heard the last couple of meetings, that we're starting to see a little bit more building permit activity, and so we will be prepared with those temporary staff should that, that level of building permits be sustained and/or continue to grow. There's funding for retail attraction, business attraction, and marketing of our, of our community for the census to build our revenue base as part of the kind of economic development emphasis. And then as a reminder, there's only four new positions proposed in this budget, or included in this budget. Three are new positions, one is conversion of a temporary position to a full-time, 1.25 of those positions are funded by the general fund, the rest are funded by the water, wastewater and sanitation programs. In terms of the total budget, and this includes the carryovers that we just reviewed, the total budget or the total resources included in the budget for next year is $236 million. You can see from the chart where those, where those resources come from. You'll notice one of the, one piece of the pie chart has popped out there, that's the fund balance. Essentially, that's $61 million of the resources that are supporting the budget come from fund balances that are carrying forward from this year. Of that amount, 36 million of that 61 million is due to those carryovers we just talked about. By not spending those funds this year, they will become available as fund balance next year, and that's why we can plan to budget for them next year. So that's the vast, that's the biggest portion of that, of that fund balance. The rest is due to, or some other portions of it, there's about $4 million of that that's associated with the asset management funds that are not being spent this year, that are being programmed next year for kind of those catch-up and deferrals, so again, those funds are falling to the bottom line this year, and we've planned to use them next year. And then, of course, there's also the $16 million general fund contingency that is part of the adopted budget each year, that also is not spent, that becomes part of that beginning balance. And the rest of those items are essentially revenues that we've talked about several times. In term, in terms of how the $236 million is being proposed for expenditure, included for expenditure in the budget, about, just short of 100 million is for the operating budget, the day-to-day operations of the city, and this is for all funds. Some of the other items, about, about 58 million for capital projects, that includes those carryovers as well. I'll, I'll note that the general fund contingency inches up about 300,000 from, from the level that it is this year. That's because that contingency by policy is established at essentially what, an estimate of what the first three months of our operating costs in the general fund are, and so based on what we're projecting the budgeted operating cost to be next year in the general fund, we had to increase that contingency slightly. And then the last thing I'll kind of call attention to is there's an item called potential grants, improvement districts, and water projects. That is the contingency we have, should new revenues come in, grants, or, you know, other kind of development-related revenues come in, it, we, gives us the budget capacity and the appropriation to be able to spend those dollars if you deem those, deem that appropriate and we find a need to do something mid-year. The other piece that's in there is the $7.5 million in potential water projects that are, will, are pending your action on a future item on the water and wastewater programs and the reviews they're going through. This is just a quick comparison of the current year and next year's budgets, just to give you an idea of how, how they may have changed, kind of at a different look, this is a look by a fund as opposed to a look by kind of the area of expenditure. You'll notice that the general fund goes up about $11 million. A large part of that is due to these carryovers that we've been discussing. There's $1.6 million associated with the fleet and, and the, excuse me, associated, there's 800,000 associated with the census, and then the CIP carryovers are about $6.3 million higher in the general fund than they were last year, so that the number you see in here is about 6.3 million higher than last year, and that's primarily because there's several larger projects going, going on right now that are somewhat unusual for our, for our normal, and that is the Goodyear Boulevard project, the ERP project, and the police facilities and that, there's two, some police facilities activities, and then also where I mentioned earlier, that project where we're beginning to build up funding for the recreation center. That's going to cause our carryovers to grow year after year after year till we get to where we can have the funds to move forward with that project. In terms of the, and I mentioned the potential IDs, grants, water projects, that, that essentially, that 7.5 million basically explains most of the increase from the 21 to the 29 million in that particular area. So we're at the point where we are again going through the, the, the steps of adopting the budget, the technical steps of adopting the budget. So after tonight's action, we'll come back on June 22nd for you to do the final budget adoption, and then on July 6th, you would do the property tax levy. In the time period between now and final adoption, there'll be a series of publications associated with property tax and with these, kind of these state budget forms that you see in the, in the document here. Those are state requirements that we have to comply with as we go through adopting the budget process. And then if there's, certainly available for questions, but our recommendation is that you approve the resolution to adopt the tentative FY16 budget as presented for $236 million.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, my glasses on. Will the city clerk please read Resolution fifteen dash one seven zero five by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution number fifteen dash seventeen oh five, adopting the fiscal year 2015-16, estimates of revenues and expenses for the city- and expenses for the City of Goodyear, including estimated property tax levy and property tax rates as a tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016. Setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adoption of budget and setting the tax levies.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second, please? Go move. Second. Motion by Councilman Campbell, a second by Vice Mayor Fazillo. Oh, I didn't need to do that yet, did I? Well, with this, okay, so open for council discussion. Never mind. Council wants to start first. Vice Mayor.
Just a general question. By my calculations, the budget increased about 6.3%. If I was going to be asked the question on the outside in general terms of two or three sentences, what makes up the largest portion of that increase?
I would say the largest portion of that increase are the carryovers we just talked about, and then also the increase in asset management funding.
Increase, I didn't hear that.
The increased spending on asset management, we've allocated more funding to those types of activities, and then also the carryovers.
Carryovers, okay.
Are you finished, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just, if I'm asked on the outside, I always like to know, I mean, with my dinner.
I don't necessarily have a question as much as I do have an explanation about what I'm about to vote on tonight. Tonight's tentative budget represents, as Vice Mayor pointed out, a 6.3 increase over last year, and in total, a $14 million increase. Much of the increase is really attributed to the unfinished, ongoing capital projects being carried over, as we've talked about. It does not, however, or it does, however, include just over $3.6 million increase in the general fund, and actually, based on the charts that we saw earlier, that number is a little closer to $11 million, of which is essentially our operating budget. This tentative budget does not lower our tax rate as we had planned a couple of years ago, and does not lower any of our other tax rates, which we regularly hear from our residents as being too high. With this budget, we're growing, we are growing our city budget despite the observations by the city manager in this report that says, and I quote, "There continue to be signs of flattening and modest growth in the local economy. We see construction sales tax and building permit activity on the decline for the last at least 18 months, yet we continue to remain optimistic that things will improve." And today, Deutsche Bank is on the verge of declaring a recession, which will start in the second quarter of 2015, and they're noting that GDP is growing at less than 1%. While I'm pleased that we're able to move forward on a few key CIP projects, we are not funding projects that have been promised for almost 10 years, and we're in fact adding new ones. It is clear that the majority of the council is supportive of this tentative budget, which is why any further discussion on my comments is really kind of moot. I personally, however, cannot support a budget that grows our government while not delivering on our past commitments to our residents and/or even contemplating lowering certain regionally very high taxes. And therefore, I will not be voting in support of tonight's tentative budget.
Councilman Laura Townell.
I do see where Councilman Stip's coming from, and some of your points are very valid, and I really do understand. I think we all want it. One of the things we were looking for was for the tax rate, and I think we've had that discussion, and it's kind of difficult when we don't know where we're going. I think you made up some good points that our economy is flattening. I mean, we're due for, I hate to say, another recession when we fully haven't recovered from this one. So I hear you and I understand your points, and you've made a lot of valid points throughout this. I guess I am going to be voting for the budget because I would like to see our tax rates lower, but I think I don't want to be like our legislature that continues to cut the taxes, but we have needs out there. And I think what this budget unfortunately has really shown and opened our eyes to, that we have deferred, we have streets that need maintenance, we have equipment that is need maintenance. I know our area is 10 years old, and ours is one of the newer areas, and they just had to start redoing the pavement up there because it's starting, it was crumbling. So we do have lots of deferred maintenance. If this was a budget that I felt that the city manager was wasting money, and I don't, I mean, but if I honestly felt that you were wasting money, and I'm not discounting your points, I totally respect where you're coming from. But then there's issues that come up, like I think the traffic light issue that came up was news to a lot of us, that none of that was really budgeted. We didn't have a plan for our growing city, and traffic has increased, and our population has increased through the recession. So I think this is putting money, oh, there's money going here, and I think we have increased our base with the new business that have come in. So the amount that each person pays will be going down, but I do see there's so many needs that we have, and I still see so many needs and wants from our citizens for quality of life, for parks, that we didn't even get a touch yet. And that, that was one of my disappointments, that we couldn't do the parks. I know Councilmember Osborne, you know, she's really championing the park in the center of Goodyear, and I agree with that, and it's really hard to see that we can't do for our citizens everything we want to do. But I think there's a lot of deferred stuff that we just kept putting off, and we have to get it done. So I'm gonna, I totally respect, and I agree on many of the points, but just seeing what we need done, I am going to vote for it.
Thank you. Next, Vice Mayor.
Again, I respect the Councilmember Stip's opinion. You know, I too would like to see some of our costs go down, but with that being said, my view, we're still playing catch-up. The asset management is finally getting where I'd like to see it, and we're still not totally there. We've still got other studies to figure out what we have to replace. Now, I know on the enterprise fund, we're going to have different muddings dealing, but you've got water issues. We had in this past legislative session, one of our own legislators wanting to adopt and I guess remove the residential tax, which could have been as much as $3 million over a period of time. They have a tendency to praise themselves for balancing a budget, and that's only because they're passing costs down to us. So there's a lot of uncertainty going on out there, and not only that, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that we have good news and bad news with the money we're setting aside for our ballpark. Good news, if we don't get the money, and we probably won't in '19 to make the principal payment, we do have the money. That's the good news. The bad news, there goes a $5 million capital funding source, gone, because now it goes to pay the debt service. So there's too many variables out there. The GDP, I think, was at 0.2%, and I think it's going to be, I've heard talk that it's actually going to be ratcheted down a little bit. So I'm not sure if we're going into another recession or not, but I support this budget. And again, to me, we're paying a lot of catch-up, and I still think there's a lot of need out there we've got to still fulfill.
Next. Carolyn, do you have anything?
I'm still.
Okay, all right. Joanne, Councilman Osborne.
Thank you. You know, two weeks ago, I went on a bit of a, I don't want to say a rant, but, you know, I went on about the needs and the wants, the desires the city will continue to have. I'm very proud of our city. I'm very proud of the fact that we are strong, and we have a viable city that has employees that we have been able to do our best to give a competitive wage, you know, and that's within this budget, and I wholly support that. And I'm proud of the fact that our city a few years ago had to make drastic cuts, and I'm proud of this council for standing at a conservative level of saying, you know what, it's not time yet, you know, we still have worries and we still have concerns. And those, and those don't go away. Those are going to continue on. We are going to still be continuing to be worried about what the legislature is going to do, or worrying about our federal government, or worrying about a recession. We will always have that. And that, and that goes into our own personal lives. We will always have those concerns about can we make ends meet of whatever a family is going through, whether they have, you know, a kid in diapers or a kid in college. It's still going to be something that everybody has to deal with. You know, I agree with really just about everything in our budget, you know. We're taking care of, like I said, the employees. We have a plan for asset management. We have a plan for all of our capital improvements. Things have changed. Some, we haven't all been happy with the changes in the capital improvement plan, but, you know, things, a lot of times, we have to deal with change. And we've always been, I think, especially as this council, has been able to look at those things that the staff has presented and have made a decision on whether we need to change with it. And I think we've done a very good job at doing that. But I also see there's nothing wrong with this year of saying, you know what, we can give back some to our citizens. Because many of the things that have come up, that we've discussed in these last month and a half, have been dealing with one-time funds issues. That goes back to plans of streetlights for the future, that goes into road maintenance, that, well, not road maintenance, but new roads. It goes into many things that we continually look at the CIP, and we have this muddy line of what's ongoing and what's, what's one-time funds. And like I said, the last couple of years, I have been with this council in saying, you know what, we do have concerns over what the future may bring. I don't have, we'll always have concerns, but I feel confident this year that we can handle a $250,000 decrease in our revenue. I feel confident in that. Just where I was, you know, years ago of having to say, I'm going to, I'm going to be confident with our city and have to take the risk of increasing sales tax, knowing that most of our citizens are not going to be happy with that. But the position that this city was in was dire. We are not in dire straits now. We're not. And so 250,000 out of a budget of 236 million, and I know that some is ongoing and some is one-time, there's no reason why we can't absorb that 250,000. And so, first time in eight years, I will not vote for this budget. And that is, and that is no, nothing against this council, that is just my opinion, and that is how I feel strongly about our city and where we can go. Because, like I said, it's going to be next 30 years that we will have needs, wants, desires, and things that the city is going to have challenges for. But you can absorb in little increments these kinds of funds. And so that is where I stand tonight.
Thank you. Next.
Ms. Norman. Well, I think in an ideal world, there were a lot of decisions we had to make that we would have made differently if we, if we could live in an ideal world. But as has been stated by several of my peers, that it's not an ideal world. There are many uncertainties, and I think, and I think I said this before, our attempt is to make good business decisions that will pay our bills, that will build our city, and that we can continue be prideful of where we live and what we have done in our city. And for those reasons, I think this budget is a good business decision. I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. This budget, first, I want to thank the staff for the 22 hours plus that you gave to us. I can imagine you must have spent hundreds of hours getting ready to present to us. But we have certainly talked about this budget at great length, time and time and time again. We've asked questions. I think some of the questions were very interesting, and some of the questions I hadn't even thought of. And I want to thank all of you for being so responsive to us, and I want to especially thank Larry Lang and his entire staff for doing what you have done to prepare us for us to take the vote tonight. This is, to me, a very solid budget. It's one that all of us have talked about. None of us on this council want to have our residents pay unreasonable taxes. However, we have to provide them services that they expect. We're not hiring a lot of extra employees. We're working with what we have. We are getting a new computer system that we should have had years and years and years ago, but because of the downturn and other reasons, we did not do that. So that's a plus for us. We're also responding to residents' concerns that they want new traffic lights. Each traffic light is $500,000. That's a lot of money. We just can't pull it out of thin air, but we're preparing ourselves that we'll be able to respond to them for next year. I'm sorry I can't share with my council member of what we've promised and not delivered because I don't keep track. I just know I'm trying to do the very best that I can do and give the residents as much as I can possibly do and give them, and have them feel safe, have a good quality of life, and be glad that they're living in Goodyear. And I think we are doing that. We have a wonderful fire department. We have a wonderful police department. Our employees are second to none. They provide the highest level of customer service to our residents. And because of that, we did give them a slight raise this year, but we had many years where we couldn't do anything for them. I know that the health benefits has raised for this city 7%. We are going to have higher costs as the year, not as the year goes on, but as we continue to figure out healthcare costs as years to come. So I really feel that we've done a good job. I will be voting in favor of this budget.
Thank you. So I guess it's down to me. And I feel optimistic, unlike the rest of the certain council members, do not feel optimistic about the city. I really do. I am extremely pleased that we have a balanced budget. It was presented to us. I thank the staff for the hours that you put in, giving us the information, whether it's on our computers, whether it was a yellow copy, whether it was a white copy. You did it all. Every time we've asked for a better explanation, to break down things, you've done that. This council has had the opportunity to vet every subject matter that's come before us. Also, this budget allowed us those traffic lights, those traffic lights that were not planned, with all those citizens that wrote those notes in and wrote their signatures on that they wanted. We came forth with that. So I think we're in harmony with our citizens. I can't tell you, and I repeated it just recently to somebody, about the number of times I'm on the street, I'm in the grocery stores, I'm in the church, I get phone calls. Do you know how many people shake my hands without a criticism and say, oh, you guys are doing a great job? This is not an unhappy city. They are not unhappy. Of course, we all would love to have utopia. Wouldn't that be nice? I'd love to just put the pencil on and say, okay, we're going to slash that tax front, we're going to slash this. We are not out of balance with the rest of the West Valley cities. We are really in harmony with them. We may be a little bit higher here where they're not. You can come and buy groceries cheaper in Goodyear than you can in Litchfield Park, than you can in some of the other, in Buckeye. So we are not out of balance on that. I think that, I'm really energetic about the future. Look at all the groundbreakings we've had. Look at all the groundbreakings that had. That meant that we had to have our economic development team tuned up, be sure we closed in on those companies, and we did. So I just want to thank the city manager for your reorganization of all the projects you've done internally. And you, you know, you always hear me call about internal infrastructure, and you have done that. I know that when we send something to a department, it is vetted out. They look at everything. And so I really congratulate them on. And about not accomplishing some things, 2005, we talked about the police building, but we're going to build that police building. That's an accomplishment. We have accomplished a lot of those things. We have not put them on the sideline, even though we've gone through a downturn. We talk about, and we hear from this council all the time, about the middle of the city doesn't have any, so what do we do? We smartly say, we're going to start putting money aside for the recreational center. Where is that for? It's for the central part of our city. What will come along with that? Probably a park around it. So we talk about, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but nobody wants to plan. Well, we're planning in this budget. This budget is preparing for the future. So I'm very, very excited about it. I don't think it's out of range. If you look at what we used to spend and what we're spending now, we're stout now. If you look at what we used to spend and what we're spending now, we're stout not anywhere near that. We don't have too many employees per 1,000. So when I look at this, I'm saying, I'm glad I chose Goodyear to live in and I am pleased to be the mayor of this city. And I just want you to know, staff, the compliments I continually get on how Goodyear has run. We are a model city out there. When we go to, I go to meetings and they talk about things that we have, they're saying, you know, that's, you guys are really going, the business community is constantly telling you that. So I shake your hands and congratulate you for what you have done this year and this budget. Yes, we all would like to have things better. Yes, we'd like utopia. Yes, we'd like to pay no taxes. But I'm gonna tell you, council, you cannot depend on your government right now, because they're spousing to take away different taxes. But nobody's telling us what that little word is called, revenue. So we have no idea what this future is going to be coming. They're cutting the education. I was in an event with the education, the event the governor had down at the stadium. I talked about putting education in the hands of government and sort of leaving the educational institution out of it. We've got a lot of serious problems ahead of us. And so I just feel like our city is strong. Congratulations on bringing the schools in to talk about how can we help them? How can we help them with the infrastructure cost, with the permitting? It's nice that we're finally crossing over that line and it's nice that they're accepting our help. So I say we've got two great schools being built in Goodyear. We've got finally a road going into the city center, in which this mayor has asked for since I was on the council since 2005. So I appreciate that. I think that's gonna open doors to us. So I'm looking forward to the future and of course, you can tell after this long, long speech I made, I'm voting for this budget positive. Thank you. So with that, we're at that point, aren't we? So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Esthetically, aye.
Passes 5-2.
Now, I just lost my last paper. Just a minute, it's among this, just a second. We'll find it here. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting now and I know you'll probably wanna break. We have a special meeting, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, let's have our updates before I adjourn it. So now's the time for council to add anything of their activities. Go ahead.
Well, this isn't an activity for me, but this is something that I was sending out to everybody. As you know, Australia Mountain Ranch, because the budget cuts that our legislature didn't think about the future, sorry, they didn't think about the kids and they didn't think about the effects that we need to spend money to have good things such as education. We were gonna lose our librarian, which was part of essential to our IB certification, which is the international, I can never say that, bachelorette, thank you, certification. So if we didn't have the media specialist and we didn't have the library, we were gonna probably lose that specialized designation for our school. We were gonna lose the newspaper club, the book club, the science olympiad that we were second in the state. We were gonna lose a lot of things because of our legislature didn't really say, hey, we need to find money for what's needed. So our parents got together and our school did a GoFundMe page and I don't know, I was sending this around, this was at US, this was in local news, it was on 10, 12, Arizona Central, it was on USA Today. It made national news, what our school did. And we only needed $20,000 and we made it by the deadline. So we gotta keep our librarian up there. And I am proud of our parents, I am proud of the parents that gave $5. I am proud of the parents that gave a dollar. I'm proud of the kids that took their money during the concert and dropped it off. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but I am so proud of our parents. And I wanna thank Massage Envy, and I would like to get a list, and if we could put it on our website of the people that donated, if we could do that, you know, Massage Envy, $3,000, one of our local businesses, made up the difference. And I am very proud of that and I'm very proud of that we get to keep our librarian and for the kids. So that's my soapbox of positives.
Well, I'd like to add the strength of your community when you look at the bike park they just finished. You think with the number of hours, the number of contributions, your community, they have really stepped forward and have decided that they're gonna make this their development, their city, they're part of the city, the best of the best. So thank you. Next. Councilman Osborne?
Couple things. I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Benson's fifth grade class at West Star Elementary School, because even though we didn't have the reading challenge in April, she decided she wanted to do it anyway, because she'd won every year and her current class wanted to beat the class before. And so they did it and so I wanted to congratulate Ms. Benson's class. Also, I had a very exciting and humbling last week with a group of teenagers. You guys know I've mentored teens over the years for a long time and this mentorship was something really new and it was two roomful of homeless teenagers. And so it was really special to be able to interact with these kids and give them some real hope for the future and some ideas to help them shine. So I was happy to do that. And I just wanted to let Chief Guyer know and our police officers that I totally support you in your Click It or Ticket campaign, after my little experience here with my daughter of late. If you pull over any of my family or any friend or anybody that says, oh, I know Councilmember Osborne, call me, because I will come straight there and observe you giving that ticket and then I'll flick their ear if they don't have their seatbelt on. So I thank you for that. How's that? Thank you.
Councilwoman Campbell? I just would like to, on Saturday, I went to the Park and Recreation Kids Park, National Kids Park Day at the Park Day at the community center and we flew kites and had a lot of fun and I appreciate all that they did and the kids had a wonderful time and they were so thrilled to be able to keep their kites. And then the EMS open house at Fire Station 185 was very well attended and it was very interesting and I enjoyed that. And I posted both on Facebook. Put them both on Facebook, so. And I forgot what else I did the rest of the week, but I was pretty busy.
Councilwoman Homan, do you have anything? Well, I, as the mayor, Joe, I wanna thank you very much for being the mayor while I was gone, handling the council meeting, it's most appreciative.
I didn't get that ACDC resolution.
I checked as soon as I got back and found out you failed in that, Derek. But I really do, I really do appreciate it. I was in Washington for a week and with GPEC and spent a great deal of time at the Pentagon as well as Lockheed Martin, Boeing, I mean, you know, all of them, all the aeronautic companies. And it was most enlightening. They have lots of information, which we'll get out to you later, right? Right? Yeah, okay. So we'll do that. But, so it was a great week. It was a really tough schedule. We were busy from 7:00 in the morning till late at night and I mean, I walked my head off, so, but it was worth it. But I did come back and attend one event and I just want to hail our teachers in Goodyear, our superintendents, a celebration of excellence, a salute to the Rodell educators. And Ron and I attended that event and I did put on Twitter the, a picture with the teachers that were honored while we were there and we will get that information out, you know, to you and the names and so forth. So we do have, they gave several things, they talked about exemplary principal mentors and then principals and then teacher mentors. And so they just, they had a great number of teachers come up and talk and be awarded. And it's gratifying to know that someone is hailing our teachers and applauding them because they've got a hard row ahead of them. So I congratulate them and I appreciate them. Okay, so city manager, turn it over to you before I adjourn this one.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, a couple of announcements. One is, I think it's the time of year to do recognition weeks, just because of the weather. So another one that's come up is National Public Works Week, that's May 17 through the 23rd. So I'll give you more on that. But I just really want to thank our public works department that they impact the lives of everyone every day, whether it's delivering water, wastewater, sanitation, maintaining fleet and facilities. So it's that this week where we get to recognize them. So thank you. The other, and it was talked about, National Emergency Medical Services Week. In this past Saturday, just a couple of numbers on that. We had 100 people attend the open house that was over there at Goodyear Fire Station 185 at the entrance of Pebble Creek. And that was one where we had fire prevention staff, community risk reduction staff, we had our crew from that station and also EMS Battalion Chief Russ Braden. But the other thing, and we talk about partnerships, it's important, we had a Brazos West Emergency Department staff there as well and Jen Barber and advocates from the Don't Be a Victim campaign. But it really had a chance to just show off our equipment, what we do with it, really how comprehensive and complex it is in fire service. And if you have an opportunity, if you want to drive by it on the way out tonight, you have to make a slight detour, but there is new signage at the city hall on the east side of the building. So you'll see City of Goodyear proudly, Goodyear City Hall. And then it also has our address on there and that's lit up. So that's just part of our signage project that's going on. And I would, and it's a little different, but Peter Fine is sitting in the front row and Peter Fine is a regular attendee of our council meetings and he was also on the planning, the general plan committee, put a lot of hours into it. Lockheed Martin employee and he is very fortunate, he's able to transfer with him to their facility in Denver. And he brought a bunch of goodies for us tonight, they're in the back room, so I know that he was, his way of thanking the mayor and council for what you've done. So, you know, thank you, Peter.
And he's the last man standing in the audience.
I believe, besides staff.
Look at that side, they've all left.
Besides staff, that's correct. The last item I have is, of course, Memorial Day is this Monday, our city offices will be closed. It's a time to really pay respect for those men and women that paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives for the service to our country. So we will be closed in observance of that very special holiday this coming Monday. Mayor and council, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just to let you know, the next meeting, regular meeting, may be on June 8th and of course, that's going to be the inauguration night for several people here. So we look forward to that. And on the, there'll be a CFD on the 6:15 and a work session on 6:22. So before I adjourn this, I'm assuming everybody wants at least a 10-minute break?
Yes, could I ask the city manager an inquiry, please?
You certainly may.
I have two, Mr. City Manager. The first one, I'd like to know when you have Dr. Runyon coming before council to give us the state of the state, or at least talk to us about his, all of his schools. And then the second question is, and you probably have answered this in an email to us, how much longer are they gonna be digging by city hall? Looks like they're digging to China.
We're almost there.
Would you tell them to bring a company back with them?
I mean, today with the backhoe and everything.
Technically, it'd be Korea, but, you know, we're close.
It's hysterical. Are they doing well?
Mayor and Councilmember Campbell, I will have someone address that second question. So two more weeks.
Two more weeks, okay.
Bob Beckley, deputy city manager, held up two and that's not two years, that's two weeks.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And the other, the first question is, you will be working with the school superintendents. One of the things I do wanna point out, it was pointed out, our management team led by Bob Beckley, met with the superintendents, all school superintendents. And we want to share that as part of the presentation when we get the superintendents here as well. How close are we working together? What are their concerns? They're very thankful for what we did with the building codes tonight. They are very pleased that we're working closely with them. So it's very important for us to have them come and present to us. So that would be, we're working as far as getting that coordinated, obviously respectful of schedules with their year-end closing of the schools. School is almost over, so we're just trying to get things calibrated and that's where we're going.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is that it? So before I adjourn this, do you want 10 minutes before we start the next special meeting?
It'd be nice.
All right, so in 10 minutes, let's say 8:15, okay?
Mayor, can you go ahead and, once you adjourn this, go ahead and start the special meeting and then go into session.
Go ahead and do it right now, okay.
After you adjourn.